January 28th, 2020 may have a roll call please, Eileen.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Mr. Borowski?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Angeland?
Here.
Mr. Chun?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I'd like to touch on two topics. First, I'd like to provide an update on discussions between our school district's administration and the leadership of the Lake Forest Education Association, the organization that represents our teachers. I'm pleased to report that since our December board meeting, many conversations have occurred, including both informal and formal one-on-one conversations between the superintendent and LFEA presidents, as well as a four-on-four meeting with four of the senior administrators and four of the senior LFEA leaders. A larger meeting also was held with the District 67 administrative team, including the superintendent and expanded group of the LFEA leaders from across the district. I believe there were over a dozen LFEA leaders present. More important than the meetings being held are the conversations taking place at those meetings. One key topic has been a comprehensive review of the processes and structures that exist for the LFEA members to use to communicate any concerns. I will not recite the entire list, but these do include multiple monthly meetings between the presidents of the LFEA and the superintendent, anonymous annual surveys of all staff members, and regular building leadership team meetings. During the meetings, the leadership of the LFEA and our administrative team reviewed the existing communication options and asked a series of questions about each option, including, is it valuable, should we continue doing it or eliminate it, and does it need to be changed or improved in some way? I was pleased to learn that all of our current processes were deemed to be valuable by the LFEA leadership group and will continue to be utilized moving forward. With greater awareness, we hope to work together to ensure that every staff member has an easy opportunity to report concerns in a way that feels safe to them, and that any issue raised can be addressed through a collaborative process that leads to productive dialogue and resolution. Important conversations have occurred between the leadership groups, and while I do want to acknowledge that there is still more work to be done, I believe that we are now on a positive trajectory. Later tonight, I believe the superintendent and LFEA president will be making a joint statement, providing more details. The second item that I would like to touch on involves my role on this board. After almost seven years serving as a member of this board and almost five years as board president, my intention is to submit my resignation letter and step down from this board on March 17th, 2020. The reason is simple. I want to spend more time with my family. Some of you may know that I have two teenagers who are freshmen at Lake Forest High School, as well as a wife who works a demanding job. I want to be more present with each of them, and I want to be around them when they are available, whenever that may occur. Also, I don't want to miss any more of my daughter's basketball games, and yes, there is one being played right now. Serving on this board has been an awesome experience, and perhaps I will reflect more on that on March 17th. I've worked alongside many incredible people, starting with this group sitting next to me, and I will want to thank them. But for tonight, I just want to share publicly my intention to resign at the March meeting. I look forward to working hard over the next two months as we continue to push forward on trying to achieve the district's vision. I'm not sure we'll fully achieve the vision in two months, but I will give it my best effort. Thank you. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Hi, my name is Karina Lassard, and I am co-president of the LFEA. Since our last board meeting, school board meeting, we've engaged in many candid, productive discussions through both informal and formal meetings between the administration and the LFEA to address our mutual commitment to reinforce and enhance a culture of trust, support, and respect in District 67.
Rebecca Jenkins, deputy superintendent. We continue to look forward to the opportunity for our administrative team and our LFEA executive board to engage in a workshop focused on communication and collaboration, which will be facilitated by the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Services, which is happening tomorrow.
We will continue to work, continue to keep you updated about our continued efforts to work as partners to ensure that our learning community is one that maintains the highest levels of professionalism, compassion, and integrity. As always, we thank you, our parents, our faculty, our staff, and our community for your sincere commitment and interest in District 67, our schools, and our students. And I want to add a note about the Federal Mediation Conciliation Services. It sounds really scary, but it's actually really good. So it will work with a large group of our LFEA leadership, and it's a day-long meeting about how to communicate with each other, how to work together, how to problem-solve, how to differentiate grievance from a gripe, establish norms, and talk about roles and responsibilities, and how to productively address conflict, which always occurs, and how do we navigate through that as collaboratively as possible. So, Karina, thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, Karina. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Mike. Next up is public participation. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the board, please go to the podium and say your name. Seeing none, we move on to reports. Strategic plan, Mike and Rebecca.
It's really Rebecca and Rebecca and Jeff and Kate and Renee, and I'm not sure who else is going to jump in there, but it's a cast of characters there.
Cast of characters. Good evening, board members, community members, and staff. Jeff and Renee and I are going to give an update on the strategic plan. We're going to highlight a few goal areas. We did update the entire plan and shared that ahead of time. The first area that we want to update you on is some of the work that we've been doing around inclusive practices in the district. And I'm going to start it out with a short little video clip. This was presented, the entire video was presented at Cherokee a couple weeks ago at their APT meeting. There you go. And it was presented, they were doing an update on co-teaching as one of our vehicles for inclusive practices in our district. It's a nine-minute video, so I can share the entire video with you, and we're hoping to expand it across the rest of the buildings and getting clips from all of the great work that's going on across the district with this. So a couple highlights with inclusive practices, and the video says it all, that inclusive practices really is about planning for the success for all students. And Jeff and I have really been partnering, all of the directors partnering together with this work. We've been working with the Maryland Coalition for Inclusive Education with Carol Quirk and her team, and one of the things that we're going to be doing this year, this spring, is doing their individual student planning process for students with more significant support needs moving from preschool to kindergarten, and then from fourth to fifth grade. And this process is really mapping out the families' hopes and dreams for their children, and then that will really drive providing services in the least restrictive environment for the students. The other piece that we're looking at is doing more, a different scheduling process for all of our students and looking at needs across all classes, scheduling for natural proportions, and then figuring out the services and supports that are needed in those classes to support all students based on their different needs. Jeff's going to share some of the other work that we've been doing around inclusive practices because it's really, it's not a special education thing, it's general education and providing the various services and supports for students.
So as Kate said, inclusive practices isn't just about students with significant support needs. Our advanced learners fall into that category as well, and this year at DPM in fifth grade, we rolled out heterogeneous grouping in ELA, and so far, it's gone extremely well, and we're going to continue to roll that up next year at sixth grade. We've started the conversations with the sixth-grade teachers, what supports are they going to need, because we want to make sure that they have the tools they need for that change next year. And then also, just district-wide, on the strategic plan, differentiation to support advanced learners, particularly in math, but just across the board. How are we supporting teachers with the tools, with the resources, and sometimes pushing in personnel, so that advanced learners are supported in the classroom all the time, not just in a certain math class here or there or a certain time of day? Co-teaching is another initiative that I think a lot of times Kate has done wonderful work with it, but it is, it's not just a Department of Student Services initiative, it is teaching and learning. And we've done so much work with co-teaching this year. We're continuing to evolve the framework. Carol Quirk from the Maryland Coalition of Inclusive Education has been working with us, will continue to evolve that framework. And Kate and I and Rebecca, we've been meeting with learning behavior specialists and their Gen Ed co-teachers. K-4, we also met with, at DPM, the 5-8 learning behavior specialists, and we're shortly going to be meeting with the Gen Ed teachers too, to make sure that we can, first of all, celebrate that things are going well, but then also look at the opportunities for growth. And speaking of celebrations, we just wanted to thank the board and the district for the investment that you've put into co-teaching. We have co-teachers at almost every grade level now, supporting students in reading, writing, math, and whatever their needs are, so we're very grateful for that. And the staff feedback from the Gen Ed teachers and the learning behavior specialists has been unbelievably helpful. I mean, to me, it opened my eyes in some areas that I thought I knew what some of the issues were, but until I heard it from them. There's definitely some issues that Kate and I and Rebecca want to bring back as we look at staffing and scheduling for next year, areas that we can do better, to do the teachers better, so that they can do better by the kids.
Another area from the strategic plan that we wanted to update is foundations and CHAMPs and the work that we're doing in these areas. Foundations is our framework for multi-tiered systems of support for social and emotional and behavioral needs, and then CHAMPs is really our proactive and positive approach to classroom management. We are partnering right now with NSSCD, looking at becoming part of a cohort in the coming year, a two-year cohort, for building out our tier-two, tier-three behaviors and systems of support. We've really been working with our foundations teams at every building on strengthening our universal-level supports for students, so that that's meeting majority of the students. So as we begin to build out tier-two, tier-three, it's really for those students who are not responding to those universal-level supports. We also are going to be finishing up our two-year initiative with CHAMPs. So our goal was by the end of this year that we'll have all staff trained, and we're about there. We have a couple more two-day trainings coming up this year, and then we'll be looking at building that into our new teacher orientation in the coming year. So just as new staff come into the district, that'll just be part of the training sequence that they get moving forward. Renee will finish it up.
Okay, great. And I'm just here to speak to you on the iPad initiative, and as you may remember, years ago, even when my predecessor was in this position, we were looking at the iPads, and we were really concerned at that time about the devices in the kids' hands and screen time. And so that provided a lot of the why behind this work. We wanted to make sure that kids were using technology to become producers and creators and not just consumers of information, and not just increasing that consumption of information and that screen time. So we were very intentional about that. So we started looking at different devices, and so where we are at right now is we had done a very systematic pilot and trial with the iPad last year in second and fifth grade. We gave a lot of PD prior to the children getting the iPads in their actual hands. We got a lot of feedback from stakeholders, and it was a complete land-of-the-willing trial that happened to be everyone in those grade levels because they were so excited after the PD that they had received. This year officially, second grade and fifth grade ended up having iPads as well as the one-to-one device, and we were intentional about getting stakeholder feedback this year. So we got all teachers' feedback, any teacher that has an iPad as their one-to-one device, and we asked the question of, do you feel it creates an innovative and a creative learning experience for the user? And you can see that we have all fours and fives on that, and then we asked specifically, do you believe the iPad would be the best digital tool to support learning if we added a keyboard? That was kind of with our learners at this stage on the iPad. They'd been raised, if you will, in elementary school with a Chromebook and the keyboard. And so at this time, 100% of our survey takers said that, yes, they felt that the iPad would be the right tool, but that 18.2% is simply the people that said it would be the best choice even without a keyboard. So that was our teacher feedback. We also gauged student feedback, and you can see the blue is our, I believe the iPad would be the best option even if we added a keyboard. 31% still wanted Chromebooks, but then if you add in that last little 9.3% of the pie, it says, I don't need a keyboard, I'm fine with just the iPad. So you can see overwhelmingly, student support was in favor of the iPad. And then we also assessed our fifth-grade parents. We've got two fifth-grade parents in the audience right now, and we asked them two questions. I've shown right here that they also believe that the iPad creates an innovative and creative learning experience for the user, but we also asked a very black-and-white quantitative question, do you believe that the iPad would be even better with the addition of a keyboard? And it was like 80-some percent. So we are looking at all of this feedback, and as a result of this stakeholder feedback, we are, at this time, next steps include continuing that roll-up of the iPads as the primary one-to-one learning device with that focus on production and creativity and innovation. And at this point, we're hoping that in 2020, 2021, barring any unforeseen issues this year, we'll have them in third and sixth. We're repeating the same roll-up process. Right now, third and sixth have them in their hands, they're getting PD on them, and we'll continue that in '21 and '22 for fourth and seventh, and then '22 and '23 for eighth, provided that the feedback continues to come back, and again, barring any unforeseen issues. So that was just an exciting, an exciting piece of information to share on the strategic plan, because sometimes these things can get a little crazy, and this has been knocking on, what does I say this, an extremely smooth, well-accepted initiative. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. Questions or comments from the board? Are you guys done?
No.
No?
Just questions, if there were any.
Yes.
Renee, I do have a question. So you said you started off 2019 with the second and fifth graders?
Correct.
And then 2021, you do the third and sixth graders?
Correct.
But that's the same class, right? That's the class of '23.
So right now, the third graders, when I'm saying next year, it will be, okay, oh, hold on a second, let me, I hear what you're saying, but what it is, is this next year, the new third graders, the current second graders, will have that, and it's rolling up with them. So rather than them switching from second grade this year with an iPad to third grade next year with a Chromebook, that iPad's rolling up with them. Same thing with the sixth grade. That sixth-grade group in 2021 will be the fifth graders right now, so that's rolling up with them. And it's really more about preparing the teachers and building capacity on the teacher end with this.
Are we backfilling so that, like, all of next year's second and fifth graders will also be on iPad?
Yes, yes, yes.
So you're saying by '23, we'll have fully iPad for the whole?
Correct. That's correct.
So every year, the second graders get iPads. They roll up with their iPads.
Correct.
It's just that it's new for the teachers.
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's why it may look a little slow right now. It's just that even, I think technically, next year with the fourth graders, for example, we've been intentionally asked this question about fourth grade, and you would think you could do this with fourth grade next year, like, we could just give the fourth graders iPads next year. But the roll-up and the PD and the support for this has been so, the support has been amazing, and the feedback has been amazing, and we're afraid to rush it because of the fact that then it could become messy, sloppy, and then teachers don't feel supported, and they don't have that iCoach support, they don't have that feeling of like, what's the difference? We want to make sure that we're helping them shift practice.
The fourth graders have iPads next year, though.
Say that again?
The fourth graders will have iPads next year because they were the second graders last year.
So right now, that's the tricky part, because the actual device itself has to stay in third grade. In K-4, it's not a one-to-one where it comes home. It's not like in fifth grade, when the fifth graders get the device, they take it with them from fifth grade up through eighth grade.
I'm asking a different question, though, and I'm getting back to Rich's question. The second graders last year got iPads, right?
Yes.
I don't care if they bring them home or not. They're third graders now, they have iPads, right?
They, the second graders last year received iPads that, go ahead, Karina was going to probably say it stays in the classroom?
Fine.
Yes.
I'm not asking about whether they bring it home or not. The second graders had iPads last year.
So I think I can help.
If a student named Sally was using an iPad in second grade?
Right.
She goes to third grade the next year, assuming she graduates from our fine school. She has an iPad that she uses, and next year, she's in fourth grade, she has an iPad that she uses, right? That's Rich's question.
Yes.
It's the same person that's coming in and getting the iPad, but what happened to the rest of the kids?
So this year, second and fifth-grade students have iPads. Next year, second, third, fifth, and sixth will have iPads.
Got you.
The following year, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh will have iPads, and then the following year, second through eighth.
So each year, the new students that have iPads are second graders. There's a batch of new teachers that have to teach with iPads, but the new students are just the second graders each year.
Correct. But also, I think the only difference is that K-4, the iPad, and this is a little bit about the cycling of it in K-4, we purchased the iPad for them currently, where it stays with them in that grade level, and then that specific device will stay in second grade. The second grader will go up to third grade, and they're going to be getting a new iPad. Eventually, it'll cycle, it'll be K, those will stay for five years, and then we'll move the rest of them up. It's a little tricky for right now, but in fifth grade, your fifth-grade children have, they have an iPad in fifth grade, they're going to have that until they're in eighth grade. But it's a little bit different in K-4 right now, and that's where it seems confusing. Yes, Suzanne?
I only have one question that I hadn't thought of before when we started down this path, but it's occurring to me today, so I'm going to ask it.
Great.
Have we thought about, considered, have a feeling about the fact that in the high school, they use Chromebooks?
Yes, and I would love for Jordan to be here, because I know that, can I speak, is it all right if I speak to the fact that I know the high school has already been exploring iPads as well? I know that a lot of the leaders, the leaders at the high school have begun receiving iPads to start doing some of those same things like explore and being, becoming acclimated with the device.
So Renee, all the eighth graders just heard that you're giving them new iPads next year in the ninth grade. I don't really have a question, but I want to make sure that you and Jen and I are on the same page, because Finance and Ops is discussing things about fees, and I know we have some new ideas about technology fees. So just keep that in mind over the next month or so.
Okay, great.
I have a, oh, I've got a question, and it might be for you, Jeff, or it might be for you, Mike Simic. I believe it was in the last board meeting, Jeff, you presented a overview of our scorecards at the state level and some of the gaps getting driven due to chronic absenteeism and participation. I know it's not in your presentation, but there's a more thorough update to the strategic plan. What are the elements of the strategic plan that address some of those issues that you guys presented last month?
So I'll jump in on that one. So the strategic plan is anchored to our milestones. The, so are you asking specifically about the communication, about how we're going to address the shortfall in participation?
Yeah, I would think that in the achievement milestone, that that would be the place where our scorecards performance would live. And so I was curious if there are updates in the achievement milestone of strategic plan to help address that.
Yeah, I don't think that we included that in this instance. I know we do have a robust plan to communicate that. We've begun that already. Jeff, I think if I'm not mistaken, you're headed to a variety of APT meetings to talk about it. I've already spoken about it in a couple of other places, and we've got a communication plan that we're going to roll out relative to that, to drive that up, but I don't want to speak too much for you, but I know you're headed to some of the buildings.
Yes, the roadshow has begun. I did Sheridan already, and we're just one at a time. But Justin, that's a great point that you make. I look at achievement in two ways. There's achievement, which is how our students are actually doing, and then there's achievement according to the state report card, which are two different things. And the way that the state designations and the report card is set up is what's being reported that our kids are achieving isn't how they're actually achieving. And on the strategic plan, 1A, we're talking about map testing, and so much of the efforts we're doing with word study and math differentiation, it's geared to actually making the actual map test go up, as opposed to the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. We want our students to do well on that, too. We didn't, we didn't put on the strategic plan update about the participation aspect, which will help us achieve a higher designation, but really, the achievement on those actual tests, our students are still scoring the same, they're just getting worked into the formula. So I guess, it's a good question on your part, and are you recommending that we look to do that on the strategic plan?
Yeah, I don't think I have an opinion about it yet, but I wanted to understand what the administration's point of view on it is, and it may be worthwhile to discuss in a future board workshop.
Can I just, Sam Paulson and I over at the middle school have been having some conversations around this, particularly with some individual cases of pretty significant chronic absenteeism and truism, truancy, and we are, there are some pieces within foundations at a universal level of some, universal-level supports around just absenteeism in general. And then there's also, as we're building out tier-two, tier-three within kind of their training sequence, they have more, they've done a lot of research, Randy Sprick's daughter, Jessica, in that area, and have some pretty targeted interventions for students and families. So we just have ordered some of those materials, and their foundations team is going to be looking at some of that, and then as we build out and go through that training sequence, we're going to get more in-depth training. So we don't have like an absolute answer right now, but it is something that's on our radar and something that we're going to be looking more into.
To that, Justin's point, I think adding potentially something to partnership as well might address that gap between actual achievement versus what's being reported to the state, since part of that is community understanding of the importance of participating in testing. Couple things for you, Jeff. You commented that one of our key action steps was to implement heterogeneous environments in fifth grade, and that is going well. How do you know, and what are you using to determine that it's, quote, "going well"?
It's a great question. Right now, predominantly, it's talking to the teachers, who, the teachers right now are extremely happy with the ELA humanities block. It's the humanities block, the ELA social studies combination. They're feeling like it gives them time that they can flow back and forth. They're being creative, they're trying new things, and we are able to, we have an advanced learning specialist who's able to get in there and co-teach and support, in addition to LBSs who are getting in there to support. From a, from a hard data standpoint, this was our first time taking MAP in the winter, so that would be one data point that in years past, we could have seen, well, how's their map testing? They didn't take it last winter universally. So we have some MAP winter scores, but that's not helping us gauge how well is this working? But in three months, we will have the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and I think there we'll be able to see from more of a comparative standpoint in the state how we're doing. But the teachers right now are extremely happy with the fact that they, it's allowed their schedule to be more fluid, they're still able to teach the same content, but they're able to integrate a lot more. So right now, heavily based on teacher feedback, but I think the IAR will really help us then see that, is this really working? Is this, was this a beneficial change?
Yeah, I think that it would be helpful, from my perspective, to add that as a measure under that particular action step, so that we can show parents, particularly parents of people who, of children who may be considered gifted or accelerated, because I know that is a concern of moving into a heterogeneous environment, is, you know, are my children growing at the rate that I would expect them to? So I think that would be helpful to have that level of data to support the claim that it is going well. We seem to be just saying we're going to go ahead and move to sixth grade, which is fine, but I want to make sure we're doing it in an informed way and making sure that it is indeed meeting all of our kids' needs, and we're making adjustments to ensure that it does, so.
Right.
The other question I had was, you know, when you go back to milestone one, regarding just student achievement in general, it says in the report that 76% of our students met or exceeded their growth target on the NWEA math assessment last year, and 77% of our students met or exceeded their growth target on the NWA reading assessment last year. And our target for this year is 100%. I realize literally everything in the strategic plan is put in place to try and achieve this overall growth goal. That's why we're here, right?
Right.
If we were to do everything in our, in this, do you think we'd get to 100%? And if not, what's, you know, where do you think we could get to?
That's a good question. From what I understand, historically, we From what I understand, historically, we have in the strategic plan wanted to say 100% is our goal because we did not want to say 86% is our goal, and we're okay with 14% not meeting it. So from, historically, the way that it's been done was my understanding of 100% is what our goal is. Is what we're putting in place right now going to hit 100% of every single student in the district hitting their growth target? Most likely not. And even to quantify, well, what is a number? What is a likely number that we're going to be able to get this year? I'm not sure. I'd need to look at some historical trends with that and also look at what we're doing in all of the other areas on the strategic plan to see what gap we can close. But I think, like you said, sticking with that 100%, going throughout the strategic plan is what we were going for. I'd love it if every student hit their growth target, but it's unlikely.
Can I pivot back to, well, first, the iPads? Since you were kind enough to be here tonight to represent the fifth graders, would you talk to us a little bit about your thoughts on what you watch through your children's eyes now that they have the iPads? Would you share some thoughts with us?
You get to use the podium also. Nice try.
May never come to another meeting.
Well, I don't have that much to say, but, so I have two fifth graders, I have twins, and they both have had a great experience with them. I think that Renee is exactly right. The one thing that they really do want is a keyboard. They do struggle a little bit with wanting to have that. Maybe it's just because they're used to it, or I don't know if it's just harder. It seems like it's more difficult to flip back and forth between assignments and stuff. But they've been very happy with it, and I think from a parent perspective, they do use it a lot for not as much consumption. My son, who's in seventh grade, who has a Chromebook, I see him playing like these outdated games and stuff way more than I see my daughters doing that. So that's been my experience.
I would second that. My, I have four children, and my youngest is a fifth grader, and so he's the only one that's had an iPad through school. And I do see in my older children, they are able to use their Chromebooks more for messaging, and maybe that's something they can use through the iPad, too, and my youngest just hasn't discovered that. But they use it for even like watching. My older three, I will sometimes go in their room when I've taken their phone, and they are like, still like, have their Chromebook under their covers, watching some sort of something or another. And of course, you know, when they say it's for homework, you're always a little bit more understanding, like, oh, okay. So I will say that is one difference that I've noticed, and that could also be an age gap that my kids haven't, between being a 16-year-old and an 11-year-old, on how you manage those things. But overall, my youngest has been thrilled with having the iPad, and it's been very successful. Echoing what Megan said, I think he wishes that there was a keyboard. And just in terms of like watching growth as children, there is one thing as a parent, and I don't know if there's anything that the district can address with this, is just more like, when do you end up losing your typing skills and your spelling skills and just totally relying on it being like auto, you know, everything's auto-corrected and talking to the device, being like, how do you spell this? Instead of actually trying to spell it. And I don't know how you get away from that, just in our general age of technology, you know, asking Google, asking, you know, all of these different elements that puts the schools in a really difficult position. But that would be one thing that I'm just curious how the schools are combating or what your thoughts are on that.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
There are features that are Chromebook extensions or like Google extensions that can actually do that text-to-speech, not nearly as easily as the iPad. But that is, I mean, one of the things that haunts me each night, like, how do I make sure that I'm still giving children those keyboarding skills and the handwriting skills that they need, but yet still making sure that they're future-ready learners and that they have the opportunity to partake in a lot of those innovative learning tools? So it's, it is, I'm being a little dramatic about that, but I do think about that all the time. Where do we find the time to make sure we're still keeping up those skills? Because we just don't know. So it's teaching kids about becoming, you may have heard me say this before, but teaching them the digital agility, the ability to go back and forth to whatever tool they need.
Thank you both for sharing.
Thank you. Any other questions for us?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
We now move on to board committee reports. We'll start off with the Board Education Committee, Suzanne.
Okay, so the Education Committee met on January 9th, which now feels like decades ago. First, we talked about, we had an ELA curriculum update. So word study has been the topic that has been the focus of much work this year. And Denise Galazianos and Jeff Micu presented to the committee. Denise is District 67's literacy teaching and learning facilitator. She provided us with an overview of the work that's being done to revise and refine the K8 curriculum in the area of word study and to determine what resources should be used to implement it. Word study, for those of you who don't know, is comprised of phonemic awareness, phonics, spelling, vocabulary, and grammar. With the full implementation of our ELA reading and writing curriculums, it became clear that the reading and writing units of study resources had some gaps in these critical curricular areas. This work started in the ELA committee, and it became evident that it would be beneficial to engage all ELA teachers in the process. The current timeline expectation is that an evaluation of K8 resources will be complete by May 2020. This fall, input was solicited from all K4 voices with regard to the current resources and instructional tools that have been effective, identifying areas of need, and researching possible new resources. Sample materials from four possible vendors have been acquired to allow teachers to try them out during January and February. Evaluative feedback will be gathered using a common rubric that's been developed, and that data will be collected and analyzed and shared with the ELA committee, the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, and the Education Committee in March and April. K4 resources will likely be selected and a recommendation made to the board this spring, so an appropriate implementation plan can be in place for the 2021 school year. A similar process has begun with five through eight ELA teachers this month, and the resource evaluation and trial process will likely be completed in May with a selection to follow. A set scope and sequence, all recommended resources, and an implementation plan for grades K through eight should be completed by May 2021. Next, we, and we spoke about timing and logistics for bringing things before us in great detail at the committee so that everyone involved was aware of what that would entail. Then we talked about state report card learnings, and we've heard about it at this table and in workshops, so I'm not going to read the details of that part of the report. If you're interested, it's posted in my report. And if you have any questions for those of you who have read it, I'd be happy to field those. And then Jeff also gave us an update on the assessment calendar. And this year, the assessment calendar had been adjusted in an effort to spread out testing and to optimize the utility of the results. It was determined that historically, the fall NWA MAP testing was not very informative and was given at a time when numerous other local assessments were being used to inform instruction. So this year, the MAP was administered in December as a mid-year checkpoint, and the results were just recently sent to parents. IAR testing will be done in April rather than before spring break, and the spring NWA MAP testing will likely take place in May. Again, please encourage everyone you know to have their child sit for the IAR tests because we need them to all participate. And then we always have a running topics for future committee meetings, and we get input from our committee members. And as a result of that, our next meeting is scheduled on March 12th, from 12 to 1:30, and we will be meeting at DPM instead of at West Campus because there was an expressed interest in the committee having an opportunity to view the current science labs prior to the demolition and the starting of that project over spring break. So we will be out and about for our next committee meeting.
Thanks, Suzanne. Any questions for Suzanne or the Ed Committee? We move to the Board Finance and Operations Committee chaired by Rob.
Finance and Operations has not met. We are meeting here on the morning of February 11th at 7:30 in the morning.
Thank you, Rob. Policy Committee chaired by Jeff.
Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. We are meeting tomorrow morning here at the West Campus at 8 o'clock.
Thank you, Jeff. Compensation Committee chaired by Jeff.
Compensation Committee has not met since our last meeting. We are planning on meeting Thursday morning here at the West Campus at 8 o'clock.
Excellent. Liaison Reports. We'll start off with NSSCD, Suzanne.
NSSCD's Leadership Council met on January 8th. You can read most of the details in my report, and I will just give a few highlights. First of all, for anyone who knows him, the NSSCD Foundation Board gives scholarships, and some of their scholarships are for teaching assistants who are pursuing degrees in special education. And Miguel Vargas from the Lake Forest High School School District was one of the recipients this year. We also are in the process of beginning negotiations with the Teachers Assistance Association and the Faculty Association at NSSCD, so that process is getting underway this month. We have, they are in the process of completing some meetings with all of the districts to determine what the needs will be for those districts. So NSSCD, in order to build their budget, one of the things that they do is they need to meet with the administrations at each district to get a very clear idea of what their projected needs are going to be for programs and services. And then the budget gets built around the information that they gather in those meetings, and their deadline for that is February 1st, and they are on target to meet that deadline. They are sending someone to the NSBA, the Superintendent Dr. Schneider and Bill Hayes from Sunset Ridge, I believe is where he's from. He's the Secretary of NSSCD. They are going to be at the Equity Symposium and Legislative Advocacy Institute in DC over this weekend and into early next week. There are also a number, a couple of other members from NSSCD who are going with their own districts to that conference. The new financial model is still in the works. I believe we are getting an update at our next meeting on that, and we had an update and overview of the strategic plan during our last meeting at NSSCD. Our next meeting will be February 12th, starting at 6:00 PM, and we are actually going to be doing building tours of the buildings that are on-site where we have our meetings. And then at the following month's meeting, we're going to be doing some tours of the other facilities that we use for programs.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions from the Board regarding NSSCD? Legislative Liaison, Ellis.
Thank you. On behalf of School District 67, I'll be attending the National School Board Advocacy Institute in Washington, DC this Sunday, February 2nd through February 4th. It's a combination of seminars, speaking with our legislative representatives, and sharing best practices.
Thank you, Ellis. Any questions for Ellis regarding legislative matters? Spirit of 67 Foundation, Rich.
Hello. Spirit of 67 reports. Spirit grant applications are due in two days, Thursday, January 30th at 3:00 PM. This is where District 67 teachers, staff, parents, and community members are all invited to submit grant applications, but you only have two days. The great application can be found on the Spirit website, spiritof67foundation.org/Grants. There's a please save the date for the 17th Opening Doors of Education Home Tour, which is scheduled for Thursday, May 7th, 2020. All homes have been secured, and the community is in for a real treat as there are some beautiful homes on the tour this year. If you are interested in serving on the Home Tour Committee, please contact Lori Whistler, and Home Tour sponsorships and program book advertising opportunities are available. The crosstown competition is heating up. Everett hit 80% and already claimed its extra $1,000 in grant money. Still vying for their chance to, at bonus funds, Sheridan's at 75% family participation, and Cherokee is at 73%, and Deer Path is at 60%. If you would like to help your child's school reach its goal by making a contribution, please go to the Spirit website. And if you are interested in joining the Spirit of 67 Foundation, which is a great organization, please approach the nominating committee through Amy Pasquazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Questions for Rich regarding the Spirit of 67 Foundation?
One question. Rich, which school is at 80% again?
I will check my notes, but I believe it is Everett hit that 80% participation mark and has already claimed its extra $1,000 in grant money, Justin. Thank you.
Any other questions, Justin? No, you're good? All right, move on to the Executive APT, Suzanne.
APT Executive Board met in January also, on January 8th. It was a busy week for me that week, apparently. Mr. Simic provided updates with regard to assessment in general, the school report card designations, and the importance of students participating in state tests, which will be coming up in April. The APT presidents at all the buildings reported that a collection of school-wide events such as Mandarin Fun Night at Cherokee, Winter Sings, holiday parties, and a variety of parent engagement activities like Donuts with Dad, mindfulness with Moms, had taken place. There were numerous ways in which teachers and staff were being appreciated and supported by their respective APTs and parent communities with fun cookie walks and hot cocoa bars. Fourth graders enjoyed the culminating performance of Barrel of Monkeys, and all K4 buildings were looking forward to, and now many have experienced the Visiting Scientist programs, all of which were funded by Spirit Grants. K4 APTs are also gearing up for their winter parties. DPM is in the process of executing, actually, their annual art fair, and the collections have been happening at the end of January. Dr. Holland visited DPM on January 21st in lieu of the January APT meeting. It was brought up at the meeting that our special ed teachers, who are part of co-teaching partnerships across the district, are not listed in the directory as teachers in those classrooms, and parents expressed a desire to make sure that going forward, that that was included in the directory as well because they want and do view those teachers as teachers in their children's classrooms. All of the fine arts programming for the year has been scheduled, and the information about specific program times and dates is being shared through various newsletters. The nominating process for next year is underway, and the deadline has already passed for that, so you don't need to submit any more nominations. And hopefully, we will be hearing about the results of that process soon. The APT is also looking into considering ways to explore additional ways to make APT engagement more accessible for working parents. They've talked about streaming meetings, filming meetings, offering some night meetings periodically throughout the year, especially when there are guest speakers, so they will continue to work on that. And the next APT Exec Board meeting is on Wednesday, February 12th here at West Campus.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions for Suzanne regarding the Executive APT? Seeing none, we move on to our second public participation time. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we move on to our action items. May have a motion to approve the Leadership Coach/Interim Administrator/Consultant Contract for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
May have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments regarding this item? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Angeland?
Aye.
Dr. Lamke?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may have a motion to accept the Director of Communications consultant resignation.
Come on.
May have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have all kinds of things I want to say, but I'm going to hold off until later on.
Say, we thank you, and we wish you lots of luck and appreciate everything you've done on behalf of the district.
And when it's, I'm not, we're not voting for it to be effective today.
No.
What is the effective date? I have it somewhere, but I'm not looking at it. April 15th, fantastic. So we're voting to accept resignation April 15th. Jeff, would you like to do that?
I'll wait till April 15th.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lamke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Angeland?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 102.
So moved.
May have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
As we discussed last month, the vast majority of the policies being brought before for a second reading deal mostly with footnotes and legal changes that happened in legislation over the last several months. There's really nothing of any major significant change in any of the policies other than things that are verbiage to support. things that are verbiage to support changes in, in laws.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comment or questions? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Dr. Lamke?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lamke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now move to the consent agenda. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member. I'll now read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements dated December 2019. Minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, December 17th, 2019. Minutes of an executive session, December 17th, 2019. Minutes of a special board meeting, school visits, December 14th, 2019. Minutes of a special board meeting, executive session, December 15th, 2019. Is there a motion, would any Board member like any of those items removed from the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion on the consent agenda items? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mrs. Levert?
Oh, aye.
Dr. Lamke?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is FOI requests. We had one FOI request since our last meeting by Melissa Mandarich, status complete. Announcements, Friday, February 14th, 2020 is Try Institute Day, no student attendance.